Good morning, everyone. Welcome to East Hampton Village Board Meeting. This is our work session, November 3rd, 2022 at 11:00 a.m. If I could ask everyone to stand for a Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Republic of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask you all to stay standing for a minute. I just want to remember, we lost a member of our community. Since our last board meeting, Danny Shields, who's been a part of this community his entire life, has dedicated his entire adult life to community service. He's been in the fire, he was in the fire department for forty-four years. He was even a part-time police officer back in the eighties. He was a terrific guy, and we're all gonna miss him. And I just wanted to let his family and friends know that the Village Board supports the family, and our thoughts and prayers will be with them forever. So, thank you all. Chris is gonna give us an update on Halloween.
Okay, Halloween was a huge success this year. I'd just like to thank all of the residents who weathered the storm of children. I, my house had thousands of kids, and we're not the busiest streets. So I know Cooper and McGurk and Cheryl and Newtown Lane all put in a really great effort to support the community. And we had kids from everywhere there, so thank you so much. Again, this is an annual event. If anyone for next year has any need for candy or assistance, please, please feel free to contact the Village Board. Also, the business district was busier than ever. I know that Marcos and Lorraine helped us circulate letters to the business owners and put a sticker in the window. And I was told that the kids in the downtown was busier than ever as well. So I think that was really great. I love seeing the kids out trick-or-treating and the families. It's a great event for our community. DPW and PD did a great job. Mike, thank you. I know the police were everywhere. The place was safe, well-lit, porta-potties. We had the placard cards or whatever Marcos says, map cards that people really liked too. So, you know, the whole village, I think, did a great job. So, you know, from the staff in Village Hall all the way to DPW and PD. It was a tremendous day, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It was unbelievable. I mean, I went and walked around the streets and, as I do every year, and it was just, I saw Tiger was having a big party on his front lawn and.
Fifty-seven pounds of candy.
Fifty-seven pounds of candy. You know, Chris had an ice cream truck in his driveway giving away free ice cream.
He did?
And just, just so many great decorations. And it's really such a community event. And it started many years ago. We were trying to figure out how many years ago, but at least twenty years ago, we started this. And, and it's just been a great event for the entire community. And that's always what, you know, as a Village Board, we always say, like, we're the center of the community. And it's not just village residents. It's residents from all over the community. It really is what makes East Hampton great. So, I think it was just a fun event and loved to see that. It was like a huge block party that was just well, well-attended. So, thanks for everybody for their help with that. Next up is, the Veterans Day Parade will be on Veterans Day this year, starting at 10:00 a.m. Hopefully, everyone can make it. Marcos and the Village Board put up these terrific banners. I'm gonna let Marcos speak about it, since this was his idea, which was well-accepted. And if you could speak about that for a second, it'd be great.
Actually, it was kind of a combination of Hugh King, Mike Baucher.
Don't blame me.
Jill Helm, Commander Ma, and, who am I forgetting? And of course, the mayor. It was kind of a, the mayor's idea last Veterans Day to do something special, so we decided to do a program or a series that would be for several years. So I think we started this year, all of our hometown heroes. I think it was a total of thirty banners from the Revolutionary War, War of 1812, Civil War, World War I, all the way, obviously, to the War on Terror. But we decided to hold off on World War II until next year, because World War II is gonna take up all, every single banner. So it's kinda humbling, and, and you'll see that next year.
Yeah, it's really fun, because you, it's really fun, because you can actually go out and find your family member that represented East Hampton in one of the various wars that the United States were involved in. So it's kind of a fun little thing to do for a family, to go out and find your ancestor that was in one of the wars.
We placed the banners on the right-hand side, so you can see it, so you could walk all the way around downtown, starting at Home Sweet Home. And a lot of Bennetts. Seems like there was a Bennett in every single conflict banner.
Okay.
Does that apply? But, anyway, it was a good program.
Yeah, it's really outstanding. We've got a lot of compliments on it, and it's nice to honor everybody in the community. So, terrific job. Next up, I just wanna make a couple of announcements. About December 3rd will be our annual Santa Parade, which will start at eleven o'clock in front of the Presbyterian Church. And it will go down Main Street and then make a left on Newtown and end by the train station. So hopefully, people can come out and join us for that. Then that same day, at the Hook Mill, we will be having our annual, first annual tree lighting ceremony. And menorah lighting will take place on the eighteenth, the first day of Hanukkah. So, though, we will have a Christmas tree and the Hanukkah, I mean, I'm sorry, and the menorah on the Hook Mill this year, which will be a really nice meeting place for everyone. Then moving to December 10th, we are having an event which we've been, we've titled "Santa is Coming to Town." So Santa Claus will arrive by helicopter, a police helicopter, in Merritt Park at noon. And while you're waiting for the arrival of Santa, three sins will be there, serving hot chocolate and donuts. And the donuts are appropriate, because this is a police-sponsored event. Once Santa arrives, there will be a motorcade waiting for him, a police motorcade that will take him to the East Hampton Cinema. And then at one o'clock, there'll be a free movie, sponsored again by the PBA, Seraphina, Donald Zucker, Jessica and Robert, I'm sorry, Donald Zucker and Robert and Jessica Zecker, the Adam Miller Group. So, that'll be a fun, fun day. It'll be "The Polar Express is the Movie" with Tom Hanks. And there'll be free popcorn and beverage for every person who attends, for the first two-hundred-and-fifty-five people. So, that is all free. Should be a really fun time. If for some reason, the weather is bad, then Santa will ride by police car. So, it's a long ride from the North Pole, but we're managing to get that done, so. And December 18th, I've already talked about that. All right, that ends my announcements. We're going to now get into our work session discussions. And the first discussion, Deputy Mayor Minardi will lead that. But before we do that, we have to do a roll call.
Yes.
So, if Kyle could read the roll call.
Perfect. Mayor Jerry Larson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Chris Minardi?
Here.
Trustee Carrie Doyle?
Here.
Trustee Sarah Emmett?
Here.
Trustee Sandra Melendez?
Here.
And Administrator Marcos Beldrum?
Here. They're not here too.
That's true. And before we get into the work session, we must.
Thank you.
So here we are, we're at the historic Hunting Inn Restaurant, Hunting Inn and Pond Restaurant on Main Street. This was established in seventeen thirty-five. And what we've decided to do for this year, and our year runs from August through July, is we are visiting on our work sessions historic sites within the village, so everyone can learn about the historic sites and what's going on there currently. So, what I'd like to do is have Hugh speak about the history of where we are.
Okay, there was something on this property in sixteen ninety-nine. Nathaniel Hunting was the second minister to East Hampton. He served for over fifty years. He was a graduate of Harvard. One of the important things that Nathaniel Hunting did, he kept a record of births, deaths, and marriages in this town, starting in sixteen ninety-nine when he came here. And that was continued on by Samuel Beul and, to an extent, Lyman Beecher, by the way, another minister who lived right across the street later on in the Village Hall. If you go to volume five of the, of the town records, you will see all his church records in there. And it's a wonderful window into the past. We find out what people died of years ago. For example, if a family got measles, one person got the measles, guess what? Everybody died from the measles. We also found out that people lived longer years ago than we thought. And one of the things about those records is, you know the Hook Windmill? Inside the Hook Windmill, there's a post from the seventeen thirty-six windmill. And we found that out, because in the church records, they had a, they raised the mill up in seventeen thirty-six. Not this one, the one that was there. And how do we know that? Because a young boy named Dayton drank a bottle of, or a mixture of flip and died. He got over-intoxicated. And that's how we know that there was a mill there, through Nathaniel Hunting's records. His wife raised ten children in this place. They also, she opened up a little store. Now, during the seventeen seventies, seventeen eighties, there was an inn here during the American Revolution. And then later on, when you wanted to go to Montar, it was an all-day trip. You would stop here at the store and get some salve and put it on you. Then when you got to Abigantia, you would break off a branch from a tree. And then when you went down the Napeague Stretch, you met the most, the largest and most hostile mosquitoes on the face of the earth. And it all started with the salve that you got here, okay? Now, there's no story that can be told about any historic building in East Hampton without complaints from the neighbors and a lawsuit, okay? So, it's eighteen thirty-three. Years ago, they used to put the woodpile in front of your house. That's where the woodpile was, and that would be the width of the road. Well, the town wanted to increase the width of the road, so they told Mr. Hunting, the Hunting that was here, to take your woodpile and put it in the back. He says, "I'm not gonna do it." Well, the guy next door was across the street at the El Bayas House. That's the gardener's house. He sued him. And the case went on. And the Hunting who lived here said, "I'm not moving my woodpile, because my daughter had to go down to the church to get married, and people were burying their potatoes in the road. So I'm not gonna do it." Well, eventually, the road did get widened, okay? So, the other thing I want to talk about, in eighteen sixty-one, during the onset of the Civil War, there was a flagpole put out in between the gardener's house across the street and this Hunting house here. And there was a huge celebration, and there were talks. And the other thing is, in nineteen forty-five, this is gonna make the planning board of the village shutter, okay? First of all, they, in nineteen forty-five, they decided to put a bath in every room on the second floor, okay? Then they put a powder room down here for men, for men and women. They left the third floor the way it was. But here it is, I'm gonna leave you on this note. The plans for the Hunting Inn in nineteen forty-five was to build cottages on the property, make them into apartments and put each of them, so they could be used all year round. I have no idea what happened to that. And I have given a copy of the records that I found to the manager, okay? That's all.
Thank you very much, Hugh. Appreciate that.
I'm gonna leave now, okay? So don't start talking until I go by you.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, I would like to introduce the general manager of the Hunting Inn, Chris Gilman, who's so kindly opened the inn for us to have our meeting, gave us a nice breakfast and coffee. So, Chris, thank you very much. And please, what we usually ask now is for the current, give us a description of what goes on here currently, for the public.
Thank you so much for hosting your meeting. You're a full honor for that. And it's great to hear about the history of this, which I'm getting to learn every day. I'm new to this town. I came here in April of this year. It was an unexpected event. They just called me and put me in here. So, we built it up for the summer, and we had the busiest summer we've had in years here. So it was a very successful summer. We have twenty rooms in the inn, and we have renovated most of them. And it will be done, completed by the end of this year. Our restaurant is, you know, it's a famous Palm Restaurant. Started nineteen twenty-six in Manhattan, New York. We grew to have thirty restaurants with the Bosie and Ganzey family. And then they sold it recently to the Landry's Corporation. So Landry's has come in and done some really great things for it. We've really fine-tuned the restaurant. We've upgraded our menu. We've upgraded our staff. We've upgraded a lot of things. So, we're open three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Like I said, the summer was amazing. And now it kinda drops off a little bit. So we're, we're doing a prefix menu, Sunday through Wednesday, which is great. Sixty-nine dollars for three-course dinner. And we're also starting happy hour at the end of this month. And I have gifts, little appetizer cards for all of you guys who are coming here. But we're excited to be, I'm really excited to be part of the community. It's just an honor for me to just to be here. I'm from, a big city, I'm from New York. So this has been a big change for me, to walk outside and know everybody everywhere I go. And it's been a lot of fun. And you've been more than welcoming to me, and I really appreciate that. And it's nice to meet all of you. And, you know, we're doing Thanksgiving coming up. We'll be open Christmas. We'll be open New Year's Eve, Christmas Eve. We do a lot of special things throughout the year. I would love to be, any kind of events that you're doing, I would love to be a part of it. If you ever need anything, please let me know. Be happy to donate or do whatever we need to be part of the community. But thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Chris. All right, so that brings us into our work session. And I'm gonna start off with, the first thing on the agenda is about beach lockers at Main Beach. So I'm gonna let our Deputy Mayor talk about that.
Okay, so I've had a locker at Main Beach for ever, basically. It was an idea that's been kicking around for a little while, actually. I think Tiger and I shared this idea, where the problem I see is that the lockers are not being utilized. And one reason that I've determined is that a lot of locker holders outgrow their locker, but they don't wanna give up their Lot One parking pass. So, an idea that I had was to split them apart. For example, when residents get their renewal, they could possibly have an option to keep their sticker, but let go of their locker. That way, we can recycle the locker to long lists of families that would love to keep their beach chairs, umbrellas, and things up at the beach without having to schlep them from Lot Two or from god knows wherever. You know, it would promote use of our wonderful beach and, and use of Main Beach as a whole. I don't wanna change the price. I think for the residents, we'd have a benefit to everybody with no detriment. So again, I, I think that if our, what are our five, what are they? Four hundred or five hundred? They're five hundred. So, an idea would be is to just break it in half and just say something like two-hundred-and-fifty dollars if you want just the parking pass. And you can continue to have that parking pass as long as you live in the village or as long as you continue to pay annually. And if you don't, then we would, you know, turn the whole thing over to, you know, the next name on the very long list that we have that doesn't seem to move very often. So, it was an idea that, that I've been kicking around and just trying to find a place worth a stick. So, you know, I, I know that a couple of us have lockers up there. And I mean, there's nobody, I, I mean, I don't even know who my neighbors are in my locker, and I've been there for countless years. So, it just seems like a shame and a waste to, to not have occupancy up at those lockers. So, I mean, I don't know what everyone else's thoughts are, but I thought it'd be a really great service to the community with really no detriment, because we're not adding anything. We're just trying to promote usage.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Great idea, yeah. I have a great idea, because I'm actually one of those people that we've had a locker for many years, but when the kids were little, we used to use it. But we liked the parking spot too, so.
So you'd be willing to give up your locker, you think? And keep your parking spot, if that was an option?
Um, yes, I would. I would. I have to, I, yes.
Yes.
I have to talk to James, but don't call me.
Kind of a board meeting about that. So.
I would, though, I mean, because it's, it's sitting there empty.
So, so basically.
Someone should be using it.
Right, so basically, what we could do then is sell the Lot One stickers, right? Separately than the lockers, is that what we're?
I mean, again, clerical, we would have to figure it out with, with, you know, the employees that, that do this, Pam and June and Lorraine and everyone. But my thought, basically, was that when the letters go out to renew your locker, you could just simply revise the letter to say, "If you only want your beach pass or parking sticker, you can check a certain box and be aware that if you forego the locker, you can't have it back. It is gone, just like it would be if you didn't renew how we offer it now." But, you know, there's a lot of, again, Sarah made a really good point. There's families that they outgrow the locker, but they really don't wanna give up the pass. There's a lot of local, possibly older or god knows what your situation might be, where you don't wanna give it up. I know that the price of these have gone up a little bit over the years. So I think it's a really good way to offer an option. And we'll see maybe what the appetite is for this. Maybe a lot of people want it, or maybe not a lot of people want it. I don't know.
Chris, would the person, let's say for, like, let's use our family, for example. We give up the locker, does that person then get a Lot One sticker for, for parking?
Yeah, you can get the sticker.
But so they, so.
No.
No, not the locker.
You would get the sticker, but not the locker.
No, 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 but the, the family that it's going to.
They would just get the locker.
They just get the locker or not?
They would just get the locker.
So they would still have a Lot Two permit?
Okay.
Right?
Yes, they would just get the locker. So again, there's no change.
So we're not gonna increase the parking in Lot One.
Okay.
And then they would be first on the list for the next available sticker of parking.
If somebody gave up a sticker.
If someone gave up a sticker or someone gave up the, the whole thing, we would just do it that way, I guess.
So it'd be for residents, not non-residents, right?
It would be everyone on the list. So it would be for residents only. And I believe we have it opened up to various emergency personnel as well, right? Fire and ambulances?
Mm-hmm.
Again, that's, that's the way it's always been. I don't know if I wanna change the dynamics of the list itself, because there could be emergency personnel on there that have been waiting a long time as well. I don't.
So we'll just have to see who or how many people would be willing to give up their lockers, and then we would have to change the code. So, so I guess the first thing to do would be able to find out how many lockers would be available, if any. And then we'd have to change the code to.
How many, how many lockers?
Sell them separately.
Shy of two-hundred.
Yeah, one-seventy-six.
All right, so why don't we move forward with that? We'll have Pam, our village clerk, look into that. Does that sound good, everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, great.
And did you agree on the price? I mean, it was really hard to figure out how to do it. I just thought half was easy, but, I mean. I think the lockers are a bargain. Definitely don't wanna increase the, the cost to our residents. However, I, I really believe that they're, you know, discounted more than they should be, but that's, you know, not something on the table right now. I mean, they're a great feature.
Yeah, I think we should leave. I like your idea of split in half and then.
We'll see how this goes.
This way, nobody's paying more. And then people who wanna give up the locker, it's almost like an incentive to give up the locker, because you're gonna pay half price only for the parking. So, makes sense, I think. All right, great. All right, so next is the Hook Pond Shrubs. So, we learned a little lesson when we were approached by a gentleman who owns a lot on Ocean Avenue, who wanted to plant shrubbery on our property to block his view from the parking lot. And it was very clear that as people are driving by the parking lot in Hook Pond, they want to have that view. But we did notice along Hook Pond, there's a lot of, like, shrubs that are really not very nice. And if we eliminated those, you would have even a better view of the pond. So that's why this all came up as a discussion. I think Superintendent Collins had brought up a point that the Village Board did this a bunch of years ago, and they got a lot of complaints from people who lived on the pond. Or was it one?
One neighbor.
You looked that up?
Yeah, and Dave believes he may not even, or he may not be there anymore.
Okay, so one homeowner who lives across the pond, who then, it opened up his view of the parking lot on the other side of the pond. So, just something to be aware of before we, we do any removal. But that was kind of the thought. I don't know what everybody thinks, or.
I would approve the removal. I wanna see the view. I think it's prettier.
I, I like the view. I'd be in favor of it, but maybe, I mean, Billy, hey, Jack, is there any types of benefits that the pond gets from those trees? Or any type of environmental issues? Do we need to remove them? Or is it better with them gone?
They're shrubs, though, not trees.
Yeah, they're shrubs.
They're, I don't know. I mean, I'd hate to do anything to harm the park.
Do you have a picture of it?
There's no harm in that.
Okay. So Billy said that they're not native and there's no harm in removing them? Just in case they didn't hear you on, on this.
They're not native.
They're not native and there's no harm in removing them? So, do we wanna move forward with that?
Yes.
Or do you wanna maybe keep it open for a month to see if anyone has a problem with it? I mean, I, I'd like to remove it, but I, I don't know. I haven't heard from anyone other than the last. I mean, there are not many of them.
Do you remember what it is by the?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it seems benign, like.
Which way?
I just, it doesn't, I mean, to me, I, I think that the point is, is people wanted the, the view. I don't think those shrubs are blocking the view.
But it would give you even a better view, is the point.
It would look cleaner.
You know, because they're, and it would look cleaner, but.
Okay.
Why don't, I think that's a good idea, Chris. Why don't we just keep it open?
I'd love to hear from other people.
Yeah, let's see what people have to say, and then it'll give us all time to think about it and take a ride up there and take a look. All right, so we'll, we'll table it till next month's work session.
Those shrubs don't prevent, like, cars from driving in the pond? I mean, there's no, is there any barrier issues with those shrubs? I mean, I think you could probably just drive over the shrub if you wanted to, so. I don't know, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, I wouldn't advise it, though.
Yeah, they're not, they're not uniform too. There's like one there and another there, you know?
We have a picture in the package, if you want, yeah.
I'd be fine with taking them away. I just, you know, if everyone else would be fine with it.
There's one shrub here, and then there's empty space, and then it's just like.
Well, let's just take a look at it. We'll talk about it next. So we'll table that till next work session. Everybody can have a chance to look at it. The public, when this airs, can go up and look at it. If they have any input, they can give us there.
Maybe see what Dave Collins says, because is there, maybe it makes it easier for them to maintain that area? Oh, was Dave here?
Yeah, Dave's here.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Just for the record, David Collins for the DPW. We do, we do regular maintenance there on those, on those shrubs. There are a number of volunteer weeds that are growing up through the shrubs, because over the years, they just, they have just become kind of infested with weeds. And, and we send a guy up a couple of times a year to cut that back. They are non-native. They were planted by the village. That was cleared. My deputy feels about ten years ago, and then we had the complaint from somebody on Lockwood, I believe it was, who, we're not, we're not even sure if they're still a resident.
It's kind of funny.
Yeah.
So ten years ago, we took it out.
Yeah.
And then we replanted.
We replanted.
Similar to what the gentleman just asked us to do last.
And actually, there's, there's irrigation, or there was irrigation under that to promote, promote the plants.
And they still didn't do well there.
And it would, scenically, I think it would, would be more appealing if, if they weren't there. And the other thought was, I, I had tried to get us an osprey in there, in the osprey nest. I had Tony go up and put a, a branch for a perch. And we have an osprey at the pond, but he just does not like that spot.
I, I think it's too close to the parking lot.
Yeah, it, it.
It's like it's view.
Yeah, and he urges, he urges it.
It'd be higher.
I'll let it.
So we see him back by the weir, and he, he'll set on some of the driftwood that we have set up back there. So I was thinking about also moving that perch to the back by the weir and hopefully getting an osprey nest. And that would also help clean up that front.
So there's no nest there right now? Just the perch?
No, there hasn't been three, well, when I came on, when I came on in two thousand nineteen, I had Tony, you know, repair and, and put the perch on there. And I have not been able to get an osprey to, to start a nest there. So I'm hoping moving them back towards, moving the nest back towards the, the weir, back towards the pond closer, you know, he'll, you know, we'll get one.
Where, where's the next osprey perch?
Oh, boy.
Is there anything nearby?
I don't think there's anything else nearby in the village, unless there's one on private. Unless there's one on private property.
And he's on that pole. Does that pole serve any other purpose?
Uh, there is, there is some electric to it, but there's no lights on it. And I'm not sure why there's an electric.
It'd be great to get rid of the pole too.
Plus, he was saying.
Oh, alright.
Move the, move the whole assembly, the whole in the, in the perch.
And if we removed the shrubs, it would be less work for DPW, cause you wouldn't have to send someone there.
Yeah, it would be, it would definitely be less maintenance. And that's the way I look at it. You know, we're, we're up there cutting weeds away from the shrubs, so the shrubs do better, but the shrubs.
Do we, do we know what the shrubs are, what the?
I don't.
Lit material is?
I mean, anything to take something off Dave's plate so we can add something else in later date would be great.
Good point, Chris.
It would, it would definitely be easier to to maintain the area. If we ever got ice again, it would be easier access to the pond for skating. I always used to, when I was a kid, that was a hugely popular skating spot and.
We already had the historian talk, Dave.
Yeah. Alright, thanks. Oh, you opened up a can of worms by asking me to speak, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dave.
Alright, next on the agenda is flagpole at Two Mahalo Beach. We have village administrator fill us in on that.
Are we doing the handicap spots?
About number three.
Did I pass three?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, let's do that last.
Okay. Uh, the flagpole at Two Mahalo Beach was suggested to be put up there just cause, you know, I think we had one at a Georgia main beach. I think for wifi issues, that would certainly help the village, cause that really seems to be a dead zone. There's nothing that can get over the dunes. So I think it was suggested for it to be thirty feet there, which is roughly around.
So it's more than a flagpole, it's a flagpole antenna?
Yeah, it would help us, yeah, for nine one one, things like that. Two Mile, it's pretty dead there, so.
Um, we can also, can we put a beach condition sign under the American flag? Like we do at Maine.
Yeah, we want to, sure.
So I like, I mean, better wifi, beach conditions. I don't have a problem with any of that.
Yeah.
Alright, good. So we'll just move forward with that. Next, we're gonna talk about the main beach handicap parking spots. Chief Tracy has a suggestion. Chief, you wanna?
Good morning.
Could sit in that chair over there, it'd be wonderful.
Oh, good, thank you. Just to be brief, up at main beach, this is gonna be the shortest one I've ever done. Up at main beach, we have a very nice handicap ramp that's put down every year in close proximity to the eastern portion of the building. And we do not have handicap spots close to that location. Handicap spots are located elsewhere. So my idea is remove two handicap spots that are on the incline of Ocean Avenue, which is a very bad idea, I think. Move those two spots into the fifteen minute zone, right adjacent to the handicap ramp. And I think we'd make a lot of handicap folks very, very happy with that. It's logical. It serves a significant portion of our community. And it gets those two spots that are not, we're not placed there by anyone that's here. But years ago, they were, they were placed in kind of a bad spot, on an incline. So that's basically the whole thing. Would not require any legislation, legislative change. The reason being the parking distances are delineated on Ocean Avenue on both sides. But the handicap spots and the spots are not numbered. So we're merely stealing Pete from Peter Paul. So no legislative impact.
Are we taking away fifteen minute parking spots and putting in full day handicap spots?
Yes, you would be.
And you would need a village beach parking sticker to park there all day?
Village? Well, no, oh, all day, yes. And then there's, we have another issue basically with the handicap spots up there, but I didn't wanna go into that involving lot one. But the village board took some action a couple of years ago and allowed someone with a resident sticker, not a lot one, to park in lot one in those handicap spots. So that was just done just prior to the administration changing over. That's gonna ease up a couple of problems for a couple of people when those other spots are taken, the spots out on the road and so forth. But, you know, encouraging the use of the spots next to the handicap ramp, I think would be a good thing. And then we free up some other spots, so. But it certainly, we, I I don't know how we could justify not having, putting that ramp in and then not having spots there. The other thing with that area, if we're concerned about spots, is I think we could take a look at the end of the fifteen minute zone there. If you look at that from Google Earth and above, it's kind of a no man's land. You you really don't have all those spots along the bulkhead as as fifteen minutes. The last three spots are basically unusable. It's it's like a kind of a, an area where we really don't look. People are in their catty corner, sideways. And then we start the regular spots going down Ocean Avenue. And nobody can back out of there efficiently on either's, on either the corner or or the hill without running into each other. So it's kind of a, people go to the last three spots on the eastern end of fifteen minutes zone and they try to get their cars in there. There's not really any spots there. So we're losing out on three spots in the fifteen minutes zone on the east end from the bird's eye view. And if we were willing to maybe shift some of those spots down the hill or, you know, locate those spots on Ocean Avenue somewhere else, that may be an idea to look at. But that's, that's more parking engineer, you know, somebody looking at it, giving you advice how to fix it. But there, it's really a significant wasted spot on the hill that I think could be reclaimed with a little, um, little ingenuity, so.
Alright, good. That seems like a pretty easy solution, so.
Well, as long as we don't give up, we get two additional fifteen minute spots, right?
No, we wouldn't get. We would lose two fifteen minute spots, but.
Do we wanna do that? Because people come and get their kids or whatever, you know, in those fifteen minute spots.
I I just, I I think from a, if you're in a wheelchair, if, to to get out of the wheelchair accessible van or whatever, to cross, it is, it is, I understand what Mike's saying, cause it's on a slant.
No, I agree with you doing that there. I'm just saying, is there other spot we could put two, like, take the other spot to do two more fifteen minutes somewhere else?
Oh, 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 add that to the side.
Yeah, so that we're not completely losing two spots.
Yes, if we're, if we're removing those two, that could be used, utilized that way.
You'd have to change, those are on the side. You'd have to change legislation.
Yeah, if, if, the, if you really wanted to get more fifteen minute spots up there, again, just go to Google Earth and take a look and there's, you've got three spots at the end. However, you're gonna have to reconfigure the, the road so those people will be able to back out. So is it kind of a one?
Because then you're gonna lose two, basically lot two spots, you know? Because on that hill where the handicap are now, we would just make those beach permitting only parking. But what chief's saying is that by having those two spots so close to the head of the beach, if you added fifteen minute parking at that, you know, east end, you wouldn't be able to back out of those parking spots. Or get in those parking spots if people are parked in the, where the handicap park.
Well, also, a number of years ago.
But if you eliminated those two parking spots and relocated them somewhere else, then you could fit a couple more fifteen minute parking.
Just for like loading and unloading, you know?
Yeah, we, when we have a, we.
A loading spot.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we have a number of loading spots on the, on the eastern portion, so, yeah.
Just like the rail.
So, and we, we look the other way.
Well, let's take a look at it with trying to get, recapture those fifteen minute parking.
Right.
Even if you have to move the two old handicap spots somewhere else.
Like at the bottom of the hill or something. Slide, slide it all down, so to speak. Not slide it, but remove some at the top.
Also, if you, maybe if we looked at making them more perpendicular than angled, you might be able to pick up a couple of spots that way. Cause those are easy in and out.
There's room for sure.
There's no reason to have them diagonal.
I'll, I'll speak with Ollie, see if he's.
If the board agrees and trustee do, like, I'll have a, like, diagram made by the village engineer.
Yeah, perfect.
To present to the board before any real decision coming, you know.
That's a good idea.
If we're doing that, should we look at like the placement of the bicycles? Because those bicycles take up really great real estate. That could be one spot or something where I I think we have to allow for better handicap parking, especially with the topography of that, that entrance. However, people are gonna be upset if you take away two fifteen minute spots, because that's a popular destination to eat your lunch, talk on the phone, god knows, whatever you wanna do up there. But maybe the bicycles can go in a different place or something. And Mike, you said this was gonna be your fastest one.
I agree with you, though. If you're, if you're riding bike, you could probably walk from lot two.
If you can ride a bike, you can walk.
Right.
Right.
So.
Ride a bike, you probably don't have that.
So let's look at the whole thing with the engineers and then we'll bring it back at the next work session.
Yeah.
How's that?
Great.
Alright.
Mic her up again.
Okay, the second thing I would say is to take a look at were two intersections. James Lane and Mill Road, and Mill Road and twenty seven. So kind of a two-part discussion, the first part being the stop signs at Mill Road and James Lane. For this one, I took a look at accidents in the area. Now, these stop signs, to me, are relatively new, several years. So what I did, I went back six years and I said, okay, let's take a look before the stop signs were there at two seventeen, two thousand seventeen. And then after the stop signs were there, and I think that was two thousand twenty. So during that whole period of time, the accident numbers in that location, the accident numbers were one. And it was after we put the stop signs. Jumping across the way to the other end of Mill Road, I understand there's gonna be a discussion regarding making that one way only. So this is something that I I look at as being an immediate win. Because when the cars pull out of Mill Road onto twenty seven, that is a large accident location. And I'll explain that, again, I went back to two thousand seventeen. So we have over twenty accidents at that location that I can tie to turning or stopping. And that's, you're coming from the flagpole, you're gonna turn on Mill Road. You jam on your brakes, not only do you back up traffic all the way to the flagpole, but you get hit from behind. Twenty times in those six years, we had an accident of that nature. Either stopping and getting hit, turning and getting hit, but nonetheless, in the vicinity of Mill Road and twenty seven. So i- if you're considering that being a one-way, I think it would be fair to assume that we're gonna eliminate a fair amount of accidents at that location. The other thing that I'm gonna point out with that location, back when the mayor was chief, he went to the DOT. We're having problems at that intersection because the road is extremely narrow and there's no shoulder. Yet, with no shoulder, people were still willing to park up on the, on the grade there. And it was, it was very dangerous. Anytime anybody stopped, someone would turn to the right, try to go, and there was a car there. And the state DOT, fortunately for us, was was able to put in the no-stopping zones from the south side of Baker all the way to Mill Hill. So that's there today. But that, the precipitating factor for that taking place was proximity to that intersection and the amount of people that were trying to go around, people on the right. So I think the, the statistics are significant and I, you know, I think it's obviously at the board's choice. But the one-way on Mill Road, I would definitely think, I would say, I would recommend, that would, that would save some accidents in that area. I didn't take into account convenience, you know, for for folks that live in proximity. I didn't take that into account at all. I just did it through stats. And and basically looking at it and traveling that corridor several times a day.
Plus, that road is very narrow. You can't pass two cars on that bridge, so.
Absolutely not.
It's kind of a.
Plus, there's no turning lane. I think right after it, there is a road, I don't know the name of it, where has a turning lane. Cause I'm concerned about stopping in the car. Too many people are on their phone, too many people are distracted. As soon as you stop in the road, I don't think it's safe, so.
It's not, it's not.
I I agree complete with making one-way. I mean, I do agree with getting rid of it altogether, because there's no need for it if you have the other one. Well, whatever that road is after it, is like, you can make a, you can, right?
At the flagpole, you can get through.
Right, and you can go both ways, but.
But there's, when you're coming from Dune Mirror, go and say to main beach, if they, you can't go that way anymore. It's gonna back up all there. It takes such a long time to make that left in the summer, towards main beach in front of hedges. And then they, you can't see if cars are, if you're trying to get through there, you can't see with the light if someone's coming on the other way. This is my way home, you know? So in front, when you're trying to get on Ocean Avenue, if everybody's goes to, so if you're coming out of Dune Mirror, how are you gonna get to twenty seven?
We're not elimi, we're not eliminating that road.
Which road?
In front of the St. Luke's Church. That road would be one-way to twenty seven.
Would be one-way. Two, so you can make a left there?
Correct, or a right, whatever you prefer.
Well, making a left is the worst. I mean, it should be a right-hand only.
No, it is the worst.
It it it's interesting because.
But then there's.
But then if you wanna, if you wanna.
Too much traffic on the corner, that, right by the hedges.
Right.
And it backs up, cause everybody wants to make that sharp right, and you can't get through if you're just going left.
The idea was to make that Mill Road, that's that little road, to make that one-way from James to twenty seven.
Okay.
And that would stop, what the chief's talking about is tra- traffic that's traveling west on twenty seven or stopping at that little road to make a left, and that's when they're getting rear running.
West.
So that would eliminate that.
And the other nice thing it does also, the fewer cars that travel from Dune Mirror up and try to cross to one fourteen or try to go left or right, that's an absolute nightmare. That is an absolute accident waiting to happen and.
Well, the other, the other good thing about this too is if you came out of Dune Mirror and made a left on James and then made a right on Mill and then a right on twenty seven, to get to one fourteen, there's a left turn lane for one fourteen. So it would be kind of safer. The only place we see a problem are people that are trying to come out of one fourteen to go left towards
That's, yeah, that's the worst.
The main street. You can't make that turn, so a lot of people go right and then make the left on that little Mill Road, then come back down James. So you'd be eliminating that, so you might, I don't know what, what would happen with that. But you're gonna cause more people to wait there and make lefts, which also causes accidents, so.
Yeah.
Or they're gonna have to pull all the way down the traffic light, which people aren't gonna do. Or they'll find another way to go.
Well, there's always the option of putting back the road that runs straight downwards lane to the driveway of the hedges, which was there in the eighties. But.
But that, there's too many cars drove into the hedges.
I, yes, I experienced that. I almost took out a police car.
Alright, so what does the board wanna do?
I agree. I'd say, I'd love to get rid of that stop sign, and I think that should be one-way.
Well, you'd get rid of three stop signs.
Right, and it should be one-way at the minimum. I, I don't like taking a left. You take a left and it's stamped and you've got problems, as you know, but.
No, Memorial Day, they were doing no laps.
Alright, so does everybody feel alright with it?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
You good? Alright, so let's put it on for a public hearing, so we'll hear what the public has to say. Alright. Next up, pickleball draft legislation. So we asked Billy and the village attorney to draft something up. Again, pickleball is noisy, noisier than tennis. So we had, we took sample legislation from Sagaponac. I think they're the only municipality that actually has any type of legislation right now. So we looked at this and Billy drew up some new law, a new law, which basically does not allow pickleball or tennis to be constructed on lots less than sixty thousand square feet or basically an acre and a half. That is new for the village. We've never had a restriction on tennis courts. But from everybody I've talked to, it's very difficult to put everything you want on an acre and a half, which also would include a tennis court. It'd be very difficult to do. And then the other part of the legislation would be if you wanna retrofit an existing tennis court to a pickleball court, you would then have to meet other conditions in the law to prohibit sound from traveling and bothering your neighbors. Billy, you wanna talk a little bit about it? Could you jump up to the?
The hot seat.
The hot seat?
Sure.
Uh, just go over what I said, make sure I'm right.
So, yeah, we put together, Vinny and myself put together a draft based on roughly what Sagaponac had done and also incorporating what we thought some of the board's comments were at the last work session meeting. And I got some input from the building department, cause there were fellows who enforced this. So they insisted on definitions for both tennis and pickleball courts. And then based off of what we thought the board's direction was, we tried to target lots greater than sixty thousand square feet where they would be permitted. And the idea of lumping together tennis courts and pickleball courts is because if you build a tennis court, it's easily convertible to a pickleball court. And the idea of lumping together tennis courts and pickleball courts is because if you build a tennis court, it's easily convertible to a pickleball court. You know, it's just a striking issue. So then we also incorporated what Sagaponac had done, which was requiring them to be lowered four feet below grade, which is actually a pretty common construction standard. And in fact, many applications before the zoning board, if somebody needs a variance for a tennis court, nine times out of ten, they're they're lowered below grade as a sound attenuation standard. We have some requirements for enclosures. And it gives the building inspector some discretion in terms of what that enclosure can consist of, but it's supposed to be sound attenuation. And then finally, the, like what the mayor said, the conversion of a tennis court to a pickleball court is permitted, provided that it's below grade and you have the sound attenuation requirements. We had a no lighting policy in the code, we're just rearranging it so that it's consistent and makes sense with with this legislation. So you have any questions?
I I just have one, it's a legal question, I don't know if you'll be able to answer it or maybe the village attorney, but if somebody has a tennis court already on a lot that's less than an acre and a half, automatically now, once we pass this law, they're going to be non-conforming. Correct?
Correct.
Is there a way in the law to grandfather those people in so they they don't have a non-conforming structure on their property?
It it is grandfathered, I mean, it's it's legally pre-existing.
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yeah, it's pre-existing, I mean, it's a pre-existing structure.
So if they need to fix something on that court or replace something, do they have to go back to the ZVA or is it?
No, a a structure that's legally pre-existing, non-conforming can be altered, repaired or reconstructed.
That's fine, as long as we can do that.
Without, yeah.
Okay.
We don't exempt that from like if you were non-conforming to a dune or a wetland, you're you'd still have to go to the zoning board, but if it's just the yard setback, you can make changes to it or repair it.
That's good, I just don't want to create another issue, that's all.
So it's already in the code, I didn't realize is that no lighting at all, so at night, people can't be playing night tennis?
That's correct.
And do we have a lot of applica- I mean, I guess it's more of a Tom question, applications that this would affect right now?
Uh, no, we have, I talked to Tom this morning and there's been one building permit issued for a pickleball court.
Is it less than an acre and a half?
No. No, it wouldn't necessarily comply with these requirements, all of these requirements, but it is on a large lot. But they obtained a variance because it was a vacant piece of property, so they received the variance to construct an accessory build, an accessory structure on a vacant lot without a principal building, so it's a compound.
That's Marina Lane?
No, it's not.
Okay.
But it's adjacent to a park, and you have a board, there's only more felt, there's actually, no, absolutely no impact. So it's adjacent to an existing park, so.
Great. Does anybody have any other questions or any tweaks to the law, anything you don't like or you think could be better?
Again, my my only concern, and hopefully it's it's addressed, is that for lots that can't fit tennis squeezing in pickleball because it's your, something that you can do that you couldn't do before.
Yeah.
It really all is about the neighbors. I know pickle, I I I'm in favor of pickleball, I think people like it and a lot of residents are very into it, so I want to encourage it. However, you know, it's loud and it's, there's people, so again, I just want to make sure that, you know, someone with, you know, an acre and a half on the dot with four neighbors doesn't cause any problems, you know, that's all. Because I don't know how, I mean, it's like half the size, Bill, is it half the size?
Yep, it's exactly half the size.
It's half the size, so that that is my concern, is just protecting the neighbors.
I think the acre and a half, do you think the acre and a half is a good size, Billy, or do you think it should be a larger requirement?
No, I I I think it's more about the, the idea is that if you have, the rough idea between the size limitation is, generally speaking, you have large lots, there there are sections of the village that have larger lots. So if you're in an area that has, you know, sixty thousand square foot lots or larger, generally speaking, the houses are separated. There's more room for people to shield themselves from one another. Yeah, that's really the objective. And then if you're, presumably, the, you know, the sound attenuation is going to help baffle the the noise. At least everything that I've read, in terms of reducing the the decibel level, the closer you can screen the court at the sound, you know, the source of the the sound, the more affected it is, you know, the more affected it has. So that's, that was the point of, you know, keeping it ten feet from the edge of the court, having it a certain height and having a, you know, certain material. That should offer a pretty substantial sound attenuation.
And lowering it.
And lowering it.
Great.
So, yeah.
So do you think sixty is enough? Not seventy or eighty, I mean, because you you see this every day, zoning and stuff, I mean, is sixty adequate?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, yeah, I I mean, we could start there, yeah, and see how it.
Rather start now.
Yeah, we have to start somewhere.
Right.
Yeah.
So you you, in your opinion, sixty is enough?
In my opinion, it's less than two acres, it's really hard to construct a a tennis court with a large house and all the amenities that come along with a two-acre lot, so.
Right, because I figured if you have pickleball, you have a pool, you've got a garage, you've got some accessory structure and to try to fit the coverage on sixty thousand square feet of that is is difficult.
That's correct.
So it's really, you're really talking about eighty thousand square feet if you if you want because what would you rather have, a pool or a pickleball court? People probably pick pool.
So I was thinking two acres is roughly what you need to fit a house, tennis court, you know, pool, pool house. So given that it's, a pickleball court is half the size, you know, we looked at targeting sixty thousand square feet. And that sort of roughly follows what Sagaponac had done as well.
All right, so everybody good?
Yes.
All right, so we can move this for a public hearing as well. Let me see. All right, I don't have anything else on the agenda, so can I get a motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
All right, meeting is over, closed. Thank you, everybody, for coming, help yourself, there's still food over there and there's coffee.